Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. It's always good to have a number of people in the audience here with us this evening. Welcome to those who are watching at home on our TV Channel 6, those who are watching on our live stream on LewisvilleNC.net, and those of you who are joining us on Facebook. Thank you for taking time out of your day, out of your evening, to be with us and watch the proceedings of your town government. We'll start this evening with an invocation by Bo Howf, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able and join us.
God our Father, we give you thanks for this day. We thank you for being our God, our Creator of all that is. We thank you for the creation of this world and for our small slice of it here in Lewisville. We give you thanks for our citizens, give you thanks for the town staff, and we give you thanks for the elected officials that are here to do the business of the town this evening. Please give them wisdom and guidance, and then, when this meeting is over, take us all safely home. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) We will have our customary roll call of council members, starting to my right.
I'm Jeff Singer. It's a pleasure to serve the town of Lewisville.
Good evening. I'm Ed Smith. Glad that you guys are here.
I'm Sandra Ma. Good to see you out here tonight.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Green.
Good evening, everybody. Marcy Gollman.
And I'm Fred Franklin. It's a pleasure to serve as a council member.
We also have with us this evening our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Bo Howf, our communications specialist Jeannie Taylor. Sitting in the seat of Mrs. Joyce Walker is Josh Harrell, our town planner. I'm guessing you're going to record our minutes, our meeting tonight?
Sure.
And, sure. See how enthusiastic he was?
Enthusiasm.
And we also have our town finance director Pam Orell. Any of other staff here tonight? I don't believe so. Very good. Council members, we have one addition to the agenda since the briefing. It will be under New Business 9I, and it is a budget ordinance to consider a property survey. Other than that, Mrs. Walker, has there been any changes to the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve, Mayor.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Mr. Singer makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That's unanimous. Hank, if you'll walk us through the consent agenda, please.
Yes, sir. The consent agenda consists of five items. The first is Resolution 2018-054, Acceptance and Approval of Monthly Financials for June 2018. Next is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from July 5, 2018. The approval of council closed session minutes, meeting minutes, from July 5, 2018. The approval of council meeting minutes from July 12, 2018. And finally, the Resolution 2018-055, Accepting the Resignation of Rob Arnold from the Lewisville Utilities Committee.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. They're usually our minutes in our financial reports. We take them as a group for efficiency. However, if there's any item that a council member would like to take off to consider individually, we will do that. Other than that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion.
Second.
Mrs. Mauch makes the motion. Ms. Gollman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Good. This is the, why everybody is here tonight for our next presentation. Miriam, would you like to join me up here? First off, before we call the honoree up tonight, how about introducing your committee members from the Beautification Committee who are here with us tonight?
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
And I'm standing closely because my microphone is there.
All right. Rich Spencer, Susan Linker, Deborah Pritchett, Cindy Tiger, and Jennifer Atkins, Athens, sorry, and Sangeri Tiger. And of course, then we have our honoree, Yvonne Hall, and her husband Dean with us.
Which is an appropriate time for Yvonne to come up here and join us. Can't understand the middle of this here. We often talk about our boards and committees and all of the things that they mean to the town of Lewisville. They are all staffed by volunteers. They do amazing work. They happen because of people like Yvonne. Yvonne has been a member of our Beautification Committee since 2004, and for the better part of that time, she's been the committee chairperson. Mr. Stevens remembers this pretty clearly. I think a number of us on the council might remember this pretty clearly. When we first built the town hall, when we first actually moved into the town hall, was it the town hall annex? It was the Beautification Committee that showed up every holiday period to decorate it. And the ladies and gentlemen would be out there, and they'd be putting their Christmas lights up and their decorations up. And they since have moved on to the new town hall that we built a few years ago. So when you look around town during the holiday season, a lot of what you see that is festive, did I just go dead?
Yeah.
Okay. Is because of the Beautification Committee. If you drive into Jack Warren Park, that is the handiwork of the Beautification Committee. If you look at the beautiful wild flower beds that are down there, and they are fabulous if you haven't been there, that's the work of the Beautification Committee. There are little touches all over town that you can see the work of this committee that makes Lewisville just a wonderful, wonderful place to live. And this young lady right here is a big reason for the direction and the leadership of that committee. So Yvonne, I am so proud to present to you on behalf of the Lewisville Town Council. I'm one of the reasons Lewisville is a great place to live. And this is presented to Yvonne Hall for outstanding contributions to the residents of the town of Lewisville. Presented by us today, August 9, Lewisville Town Council. Miriam, would you like to say a couple of words?
My.
And I'm in a position, so we have the roving mic.
Woo! Yes. Well, we'd like to present Yvonne with these beautiful flowers and cards from the committee. Even though you haven't been able to help us as of late, you're there in spirit and you're always directing us with emails, do this, do that. List of trees for downtown, and you know, I have to look up the trees now. But, you know, she's always an inspiration. And we do other things beside the decorations. We do the clean sweep.
That's right.
Which is in the fall and the spring. And also, we award yards, the most beautiful yard award in the summer. So get your yard cleaned up. And then at Christmas, we also go around with Joyce, and we spend a whole night, we have a little potluck, and we drive all around. And I don't know how she finds all these places, but we drive all around. We find all the places that have taken the time to decorate, whether it's with lights or nativity, or whatever, you know? So we do a lot of those things, plus we work in the park and anything else that they come up with.
That's great. Thank you, Miriam. Yvonne, thank you very much. I know you want to say something. Let me shift my position here again.
I really feel honored with this award, and I thank you so very much. But without the help of the beautification, for me, a lot of the projects wouldn't have been made possible. And I'd like to also thank Zeke Mauch for always being there with us and for the support of the town council and the wonderful staff that we have. Just thanks to everyone.
I've got to share a story real quick about Yvonne. As mayor, I think I've got a really, a lot of really great ideas that I think people should consider. Sometimes that's true, and sometimes it's not true. I came to Yvonne and the committee at one point, and I said, "You know, we're losing a lot of our historic, traditional apple trees in Lewisville. And wouldn't Jack Warren Park be a great place to plant a legacy apple orchard with all of the varieties that have been collected?" And she looked at me, and she said, "Ma, I'll take that back to the committee, but I can tell you that I don't think it's a good idea." And sure enough, she, they made a number of points which I hadn't considered.
Now, the reason I said that was because of the deer that are in the park that we have to continually spray to keep them off of our, out of our gardens. So that was the reason. It was a good idea, but maybe another place. We'll put it somewhere.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're coming up, excuse me, to the public, first public forum tonight. It's an opportunity for residents who want to share their thoughts or concerns with the town council to come up and speak to the council. We generally listen and try to absorb what you're saying. We generally don't respond. We have one person that signed up to speak tonight, and that's Lindy Perry. Come on up, Lindy. You'll do fine. Yes, ma'am. Come on up to this microphone. You're doing great. If you'll just start off with your name and address.
Okay. I'm Lindy Perry. I'm 1413 Santalina Lane. I moved here about three years ago from Florida, St. Pete, and been coming here for years. But lately, in the last couple of months, I have a couple of roosters in the neighborhood. And they're crowing at all hours, six o'clock getting paper. In fact, they're crowing when I got in my car tonight. And so when I called the town hall, they said I had to come here to talk about it because it was legal. In Florida, we didn't have, I mean, I'm in the veterinary business for 39 years, so it's not like I haven't worked on them. I just don't want to hear them. And since Sunday's my only day off, the windows are going to start being open soon. And in Florida, we never got that, and maybe in December. But I don't want to hear them all the time. So I don't know if there's anything to be done, but it's a regular neighborhood off a sequoia close to the fire station. So the houses are pretty close, and they've just shown up in the last couple of months. So, and I've recorded them, but I don't know if that's necessary, but they're there. So it's going to be a little bit of a problem once everybody's windows are going to be open. And I understand they're legal, but I don't know if we necessarily want to hear them.
Very good.
That's pretty much, pretty much it.
You did an excellent job expressing that. Very good. Town manager, Mr. Perkins, is sitting right there. He will give in some consideration and maybe consider some options that he can bring back to you, and primarily probably the Homeowners Association, because I think something like this would, would be, could be served through that. But Mr. Perkins will get back with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak tonight? Very good. We'll close our public hearing. I'll remind you, there are forms on the back table, should you wish to leave written comments. You can do that at any time during the meeting. We have no evidentiary hearings this evening. Pam, we have an appointment.
Yes, we have an appointment, Order 2018-010, to appoint and reappoint members to the Student Leadership Committee. And we do have 19 students requesting appointment to Student Leadership this year.
That's exciting. Council members, any questions for Pam?
For the appointment order of 2018-010?
Second.
Mr. Singer makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That's unanimous. Welcome, kids, to the committee. I know you'll have a great experience. Unfinished business.
For you tonight, you have the final step in the language revision process to the charter. We have previously adopted a resolution of intent. We, the public hearing was conducted at your June meeting, and tonight is the night for the deliberation with regard to the proposed language amendment. This is the same language that was presented to you at briefing last week. For the benefit of the public, I might read that, if that's okay. We would be revising Section 3-5 of the town charter to read as follows. Governing body, limitation on terms of office. While term limits for members of municipal governments have been determined unenforceable under the North Carolina State Constitution, it is in the spirit of the original framers of this charter that members of the town's governing body, whether as mayor or member of the town council, or any combination thereof, are strongly encouraged not to consider seeking reelection or appointment to any office on the governing body for the next two-year term following four consecutive terms on the governing body.
Thank you, Bo. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mauch makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Council members, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add something to that. What Bo has talked about, I would like to add, it is the expectation that members of town's governing body, whether the mayor or town council, or any combination therefore, are strongly encouraged not to consider reelection or appointment to any office on the governing body for the next two-year term following four consecutive terms of the governing body.
Okay. So, Mr. Green, you're suggesting that we add the phrase, council members, here is, I believe, a copy. I'm not sure if this is the most accurate copy or not. Mr. Green, will you say that again, please, and let me, let us highlight where that is? Bo, do we have that on a slide?
I don't, I doubt, I don't think we have that on a slide.
Okay. Mr. Green, go ahead and give us, give us that to, that again, please.
Okay. This is Section 3 through 5. Governing body, limitation on terms of office. While term limits for members of municipal governments have been determined unenforceable under the North Carolina State Constitution, and this is what I'd like to add to that, it is the expectation that members of the town's governing body, whether as mayor or member of the town council, or any combination therefore, are strongly encouraged not to consider seeking reelection or appointment to any office on the governing body for the next two-year term following four consecutive terms on the governing body.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor, since I didn't have that in front of me, I got, it is the expectation of, could you give me the next few words, please?
Expectation that members of the town's governing body. Any further discussion, council members?
I'd like to have that read back in hold one time, please. By either the attorney or by yourself.
I will probably get this wrong.
I won't get it wrong now. I have something to read.
The language would read as Mr. Green is, I think, proposing a substitute motion, but we'll see about that. Section 3-5, governing body, limitation on terms of office. While term limits for members of municipal governments have been determined unenforceable under the North Carolina State Constitution, this is the new language, it is the expectation that members of the town's governing body, whether as mayor or member of the town council, or any combination thereof, are strongly encouraged not to consider seeking reelection or appointment to any office on the governing body for the next two-year term following four consecutive terms on the governing body. This would, might, would take out the language, "It is in the spirit of the original framers of this charter," and just then move that, and then the words, "It is the expectation," and then pick up with "that" the members. So the language, "It is in the spirit of the original framers of this charter," that, that, those words would be removed under the substitute motion suggested.
You know, since we started the discussion on this thing, it, it's, it's changed several times in this process. It has changed again. And quite frankly, at this, at this moment right now, I don't know exactly what language I'm voting on, because I can't see it and read it, you know, from last communications and so forth. I'm just exasperated about it.
Right.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Franklin, I think, Bo correct me, but I believe what you read is what we reviewed at our briefing meeting, right?
No, it's not, Ed.
It's not?
I'm sorry.
Is it not?
It's changed since briefing. That's what I'm getting at.
Has it?
Yes, it has.
I, Fred, I don't know if any changes have been made, other than what Mr. Green is proposing.
Because I thought that's what Bo read was the language we actually had on the table at our briefing meeting.
If, if Mr. Green's alternative motion is not accepted, then I think the, what Bo read is exactly what we heard at briefing.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's correct.
That I do understand, and I have read and so forth, you know, but we've got another suggested change at the last moment, so.
From my understanding, that's exactly what I am understanding, is that what was presented last week at briefing that I was not present at is what, what Bo was reading from, other than what Robert just presented.
What I read to you at the outset of my presentation was what was presented at briefing.
Right.
Mr. Green has suggested a substitute that, that changes that, but what I read to you was the language that was presented at briefing. And you should have that, if you highlight that, you can find that language in the, in your agenda package, if you have your iPads with you.
But our current motion is the, the verbiage, if you will, from last briefing meeting, last Thursday. Is that correct?
What was read by Mr. Howf?
That, that's correct. The, the present motion, that was, I believe, it was, was, what was, what I read to you is Mauch made the motion, Mr. Smith made the second, and then during the discussions, Mr. Green has made this suggested change. So there hasn't, there's not been a substitute motion made, and there hasn't been any agreement by the original moving party to accept the change.
Mayor, if we could, let's, let's deal with a substitute motion first, and then before we take a vote, let's have our attorney read exactly what we're going to be voting on one more time.
Okay. The substitute motion will need a second. There is no second, then the substitute motion dies, and we're back to consideration of the original motion. And Bo, if you'll read that, please.
Charter, Section 3-5, governing body, limitations on term, limitation on terms of office. While term limits for members of municipal governments have been determined unenforceable under the North Carolina State Constitution, it is in the spirit of the original framers of this charter that members of the town's governing body, whether as mayor or member of the town council, or any combination thereof, are strongly encouraged not to consider seeking reelection or appointment to any office on the governing body for the next two-year term following four consecutive terms on the governing body.
Thank you, Bo. Call the question.
Question's been called. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one with Mr. Green in opposition. Thank you, counsel. New business, Josh, you've got something on the pedestrian connection overlay.
I just don't feel right with this.
If it's uncomfortable for you, think how it is for us when we look over there.
You do look nice with your shaved face, though. That's good.
Appreciate that.
Still getting used to that.
Resolution 2018-046 would be setting a public hearing on the pedestrian connections overlay district for Thursday, September 13, 2018. This new overlay district would look at potentially requiring new projects to incorporate pedestrian connections throughout the town and to seek implementation of the town's pedestrian and greenway connections plan that was adopted a number of years ago.
Motion to approve?
Second. It's a motion to approve and a second. Josh, I believe I had one question that we had discussed earlier about requirements. If you were to develop a property based that, as identified in this particular ordinance, that was not remotely connected to the future pedestrian pathways, greenways, or sidewalks, are you still obligated to make that investment even though the likelihood of making connection would not be there?
And I'm working on getting that language together now, but that will be presented to you at the next meeting.
Okay. So this is simply to set the public hearing?
That's correct.
And Josh will come forward with us with some clarification on that point at the, at the meeting. So we have a motion by Mr. Franklin, a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That is unanimous. Josh, you have the setting a public hearing for the permitted uses table.
Resolution 2018-052 would be setting a public hearing for Thursday, September 13, 2018, to receive comments on UDO L-158, which would be amending the UDO by adding veterinary services to the permitted use table in LD1S.
Council members, any questions for Josh?
Yeah. What is the, you know, we spend, I know, being a former planning board member, we spend a lot of time on uses, and where they would go, and what they would be, and why we do, why are we, and it seems to me, anyway, I just wonder, why are we changing this now?
The request, which you'll, you'll get to next, would be the next resolution. In order for the project to move forward, the amendment would need to be made to the permitted use table for LD1S.
So I guess, this is my concern, and for those of you who know me, I'm bigger, I kind of view things more from the 30,000-feet level than the, you know, what word are we going to put in there, kind of thing? And my concern is that, you know, we, we spend a lot, I mean, hours and hours and hours, these guys were there, talking about uses and what we wanted where and why we wanted them, and we had reasons why we limited some and why we didn't eliminate some. And my concern is, is that we're getting to a point, it seems like, that we repeatedly, and not just with the use, but with different regulations, we can make exceptions or changes because someone has come to us with a petition. And so I guess, you know, my concern is, at some point, we get to a spot where, you know, are we, are we bending so much that, hey, just propose whatever you like, we'll find a way to make it work? And I also think about just the hours that, that someone else put into these, and myself, but a lot of other folks, and, you know, at what point, and why are we doing that if then we're going to change because, you know, I mean, I guess, where's the line? So where do we say, okay, well, you know, and I could give you a list of properties where we've changed stuff, I mean, and, and, you know, to accommodate, we change, and it's our ordinance, it's, it's our zoning, it's what we, it's our overlay, all of that stuff that we've spent a lot of time to put together, but we change it when a petition comes through. At some point, where do we get to the point where the precedent has been established that, well, you know, all of our stuff that we do for zoning is really just a really strong suggestion, but if you've got another idea, just bring it? And so that's, that's kind of my concern, because I think, by my calculations, if we do this, and then we do the other, that 50% of the properties that have been developed in downtown Lewisville, under our ordinance, will have had exceptions to our ordinance made for them. And I just want to know, you know, as a guy who didn't have any exceptions made for him, if I have someone come to me and want to do something in Lewisville in my private business, how do I get exceptions? And then where do we decide, where do we decide, okay, well, the exception's okay for you, but for over here? And we've had people in this town that we've had to hold their feet to the fire because of our ordinance, right? How can we hold them to their feet to the fire, but we make exceptions over here? And so for me, and, and it's got nothing to do with the petitioner, but for me, it's kind of the bigger picture of, I feel like we're creating a really big muddy spot here. There's nothing clear and concise. We just keep, we keep muddy in the water, and muddy in the water, and muddy in the water, and I, you know? So those are my comments.
Josh, this is, this is coming to us with a recommendation of the planning board?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is also a text amendment petition by the applicant.
By the applicant.
For this.
Okay. What was the vote from the planning board?
It was split.
Yeah. I wasn't there for the meeting. I wasn't there for the meeting, so I apologize.
What happens on a split vote, do you know?
It was approved by a majority.
Okay, even though it was split?
Same, yeah.
So, how can it be split if it was approved by the majority?
Four to three?
Three.
To me, it's still one, so, yeah. Okay, so, it's still one. So, on these text amendments, is what you call them, and then it goes to a vote, right? But I think, Jeff, you make a very valid point here. Where do you, you know, I guess, draw the line? Because as Louisville grows, you've got a whole different set of parameters, one might say, and it does sound like that, Jeff, your business got held to a little different standards than what others are being held to. I'm looking at it here from a non-business-owning perspective. Are the ordinance a little too strict? Let me ask that.
Well, I think the other issue is this, there's other places in town where this is allowed, and there's property available.
We do need to be reminded what we're doing is setting public hearing, and the petitioner is entitled to the public hearing, whether, however, the vote might go, but whenever an application is submitted, then you're duty-bound to set a public hearing. You don't have to set it for this date, but you do have to, you are required to set a hearing.
That's what I was thinking. This use was once on the table. Our planning board recommended, along with other uses, that they be removed, and at the time that the council removed them from the table, there was probably not a public hearing held to remove them. Now, we're having a public hearing to add to this, so we want to get public input to add back, all right? I make the motion that we set the public hearing, if that has not already been done, because that's the issue before us, is establishing a public hearing, and let's move on.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? Set the public hearing for, Josh, that'll be September 13?
September 13.
Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, we have a public hearing set, and I'm looking forward to some spirited debate on this issue, with some public input, and some input from the petitioner. And Josh, maybe if you'll alert the planning board that if one of their, certainly maybe their chairman or their vice-chairman could attend, and be, serve as a resource for us to kind of share with us their thoughts of why they're recommending this approval. Thank you, council. Josh, you have another item.
Resolution 2018-053 would be to set a public hearing for Thursday, September 13, 2018, to receive comments on a rezoning request, L-085, to rezone, pin number 5875-96-1689, from RS20 to LD1S.
And all of, these last three motions are all related, and they need to, at least my understanding is, they need to move forward together in order to be able to be considered.
The last two resolutions.
Last two resolutions, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Mrs., I'm going to say Mrs. Gollman, although Mrs. Mock also was a tie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a public hearing set for Thursday, September 13. Mr. Franklin, I'm glad that you're not leaving at 5:00 in the morning next meeting.
Yeah.
Because we may be here for a while. Hank, you have an item for us of updating Louisville's Unified Development Ordinance.
Yes, we have ordinance 2018-041 in the Louisville Town Council. This will be updating the Louisville Unified Development Ordinances by adding supplement number eight, as it was discussed last week. Town Council has already approved these five ordinance amendments to the UDO. This is approving the supplement, so it can be added formally to our UDO.
Any questions for Hank? Entertained a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Josh, we're back to you for a site plan amendment.
Bear with me one second, I'm getting it up on the screen.
Thank you. You know, Ms. Walker's much more efficient at getting this.
Tough crowd, brother.
I'll go back up here. All right, so this is really a convoluted explanation, I'll try to make it as simple as possible, but the site plan that's on the screen is a proposal to change an original site plan that was from 2004, for 6360 Shalaford Road, which is now upbeat music company. The proposed 50-by-40 pervious pavers, the parking lot they're proposing, is the new addition to the site plan. To give you a little bit of background, Mr. Randy Naftal is here, and he'll be answering some questions for you, but he's requesting a site plan amendment for some additional parking for the business. He does have the current required parking spaces, but his business has grown, and he needs some more spaces to accommodate his customers. We investigated the original rezoning request for this property, it was back in '04. There was some language in the rezoning request that stipulated that this property would be connected to the property to the north, which is the dentist office property, Dr. Newsom. Upon investigation, this connection between the two lots via parking areas was never complete. Doing a little more investigation, back to 2001, when Dr. Newsom's project went through, she did put in a connection to connect with this property, a curb cut, and the language from that rezoning from 2001 was that she was to facilitate connecting with the adjoining properties once they became non-residential properties. Obviously, that didn't happen in this case. So, Mr. Naftal and I had numerous discussions. We did have involve the county. The county is in the process of communicating with both owners, at least with the dentist office at this point in time, I've had conversations with them last week. This did go before planning board. Planning board did approve them to go ahead and move forward with their new parking lot. I will say that staff did recommend that the connection be made before they move forward with their parking lot. Planning board was okay with them putting a new parking lot in and having city-county sort out the connection part of what was required back in 2004. And that's really all of it. I'll be happy to have Mr. Naftal come up, if you want him to answer questions, or I can answer questions.
We'll see where we go with it, and we may do both.
So, the connection is on the site plan, so I'm assuming that the connection's going to be made with the addition of this parking lot?
That's what's shown on the site plan.
I mean, that's what everybody else has had to do.
I don't know when. Sure.
Yeah, I mean, just go down through Louisville, they're all connected.
I mean, the connection was required in 2004, it was never made, so it's just, it's one of those things where we don't have our own in-house enforcement, so we do have to rely on another jurisdiction to do that for us.
And what triggered this was a request for a site plan modification, and upon investigation, we found that there was a connection required.
That's correct.
Right, so if the petitioner's going to make the connection, if, you know, if it's part of the site plan that we approved, the petitioner makes the connection, and it all goes away, correct?
Should.
Yeah.
That would be made as a condition, right?
It is shown on the site plan. You could always make that as a condition, too, but it is shown on the site plan.
Any questions for Mr. Naftal, who happens also to be here?
What's your comments?
Would you like to make any comments?
A couple, you know, all this, of course, occurred before I, you know, I bought the property, it was not disclosed to me either in the documents as well, but we're certainly willing to do what is required there. Our business has grown to where we're working with about 180 local families now, so that's why we want to put in sort of an ecological addition to the parking there, mostly for, we do private music lessons of a variety of instruments, and we have a number of teachers coming, but a lot of people that come on the half-hour, so we need some way to get them in and out of there efficiently. So, as a project, it could all be together.
Very good. So, you support the making the connection?
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to Dr. Newsom, and neither of us think it's really going to help us much, but it's on the site plan, so I'm not sure what the option is there. You know, I don't believe that we'll be using each other's parking lot, but...
You never know.
Yeah.
She may go home at 5:00, and you may get busy at 6:00.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Very good. And Jeff and Sandra, and you were all on the planning board during this period of time, but I think the intention was that, rather than having massive parking lots downtown, we looked at flexible usage of businesses where, during peak times, there would be availability of additional parking, and there could be flexibility during the day, during the evening, and our whole intent there was to try to eliminate a whole bunch of curb cuts, with everybody having their own parking area.
The other thing was, too, is keep in mind, the whole reason, or the whole way that the Great Wagon Road came to be, is that there was talk of a five-lane road, and so the idea was, if we have those connected, as Louisville grows, you don't necessarily have to go out on the road, drive down two-block, or, you know, three-lots to go in to get to the next one, you can just go from the back, and it keeps the traffic off the roads. Then you add that to, then later, we did the curb cut restrictions, and so a lot of this stuff is for future. I will say that, you know, we have that 30% parking reduction that we allow people to do when they develop these properties, but I can tell you, on my end of Shalaford Road, we fill it up, and it's to the point where it's not user-friendly. So, I'll make a motion to approve this with the curb cut going through.
Second.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Mr. Naftal, congratulations on the growth of your business, that's great, we love to hear success stories. All righty. Pam, you have some financial transfers for us to consider.
Yeah, the next three ordinances will amend three of our capital reserve funds to reflect recent transactions in and out of those reserves. The first one is ordinance 2018-042. This is to amend the Municipal Stormwater Capital Reserve Fund, acknowledging the transfer of $33,600 to the Heritage Drive Regional Stormwater Pond Number One Capital Projects Fund, and that the council, effective with the 2017-18 fiscal year, will continue to transfer not less than $95,000 from the general fund to the Stormwater Capital Reserve Fund each year until June 30, 2022, or until the fund reaches $560,000.
Very good. Any question for Pam? We have a pause here. Give us just a moment here, ladies and gentlemen, don't change channels at home.
Hang on a minute, hang on.
You want to miss the continuing saga?
I'll make a motion to let Ms. Mock step aside while we consider this matter.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes a motion, Mr. Smith makes the second, to recuse Councilwoman Mock because there is a potential conflict of interest exists. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Mock, you are excused. Now, we can move forward with questions or inappropriate motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Zinger makes a motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Mock, you're welcome to come back, and we'll welcome you back to the council discussions. Pam, you have another ordinance for us.
Yeah, ordinance 2018-043. This is to amend Section 2 of the Great Wagon Road Right-of-Way Construction Capital Reserve Fund, effective with the 2018-19 fiscal year budget, to transfer an amount of no less than $115,000 each fiscal year from the general fund to the capital reserve fund until June 30, 2026, or until the fund reaches a balance of $1.5 million.
Any questions for Pam? Entertained a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. You have a 1.5 million item for us.
Yes, ordinance 2018-044. This is to amend Section 2 of the Municipal Buildings and Land Capital Reserve Fund, effective with the 2017-18 fiscal year, to appropriate or transfer an amount of no less than $170,000 each fiscal year from the general fund to the capital reserve fund until June 30, 2026, or until the fund reaches a balance of $1.5 million.
Any questions for Pam?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Hank, you have a budget ordinance for us.
Yes, we have ordinance 2018-047, amending budget ordinance 2018-001 for $4,700 for project survey work.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Zinger makes a motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, that is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, let me just step back just a few moments to the previous item that we had where Mrs. Mock was excused. Ethic code violations that we all take as council members or elected officials require us to excuse ourselves from discussion if there's a potential for financial gain on a matter that we might be considering. We're very fortunate in this town that we have council members who serve, who recognize even the slightest opportunity for a conflict of interest, and do excuse themselves from consideration of those items. Thank you, Mrs. Mock, for doing so. Hank, upcoming events?
Upcoming events and town holidays. Tonight, we're on a calendar here, we've got the Little Mermaid out at the square, this is our rain date for a date we lost last weekend. Then tomorrow, on the 10th, Saturday, the 11th, and then finally, Sunday, the 12th, we will have three showings of the play The Little Mermaid in the square. And then moving forward to the, towards the end of the month, on the 24th, Friday, we will have movie night, which will be Cars 3. And then, I'll just say one more, Monday, September 3, the town will be closed in observance of Labor Day.
Very good. Any questions for Hank on our events? Hank, please update us on our actions we took at our briefing, please.
Okay, approvals in briefing action minutes, action items. We had ordinance 2018-040. We amended budget ordinance 2018-001, an amount of $1,300 to provide for road striping on Falmouth. We also approved ordinance 2018-045, amending budget ordinance 2018-001, in an amount of $1,700 to purchase and install two security cameras at Jack Warren Park. Also covered under manager's report that City Vision 2018, formerly the town hall's annual conference for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, will be held September 19th through Friday, September 21st, in Hickory, at the Hickory Metro Convention Center. And then I was selected last week to be the election, I'm the delegate for the voting at the business meeting. The town clerk is, was selected as the alternate. And then we, the last part, our town clerk, who is not here this evening, did announce that we do have an opening for the Louisville Utilities Committee. This was the resignation that we accepted at the beginning of the meeting.
Very good, okay. An opportunity to serve, folks, so check with us, go on our website, and you can read about our utilities committee and what it does. Now, come to the second opportunity for anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council, share what's on your mind, what's in your heart. Please come forward now, state your name and address. Anybody wish to speak? Very good, thank you. Again, written comments, forms are on the back table, if you wish to leave that. Council, any comments this evening? I would like to encourage our residents, if you have not seen it yet, The Little Mermaid is probably one of the best presentations that we have had. We have star quality in the lead role. If you have not taken the opportunity to see it, if you're still at home and want to get off your couch and run down, you can catch, you've only missed the first 30 minutes, but if not, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, it's a terrific, terrific production, and it involves a number of young people who live here in Louisville and the surrounding community, so please take time and go do that. I want to thank the Shalaford Reserve Homeowners Association for inviting me and the deputies in our fire department to their National Night Out, which was last Tuesday. This is when homeowners associations all across the state, or actually, all across the country invite their first responders to say thank you, and for all the things that they do. And council, if you'll indulge me, I would like to read something to you. Occasionally, I get a letter, well, I get letters often from our elementary school students, and students who may be at a library, they have a civics class, or civics lecture, and they're asked to write the mayor, in fact, we're going to change this to write all council members, so I'm not answering 40 letters, but this is one that I wanted to share with you, because I thought it was particularly clever. This was a seven-year-old, and I think it's a great way to end our meeting this evening. "Hi, my name is Elizabeth, and for all of my life, I have been a Louisville resident. My father..." My father was a PTA president at my school, and I once went to a meeting with you. I am a great singer. I am in the sixth, I am in The Little Mermaid at the town square. I am squirt, a mermaid, and a frog." I guess she plays double roles. "And I am in the children's ensemble. I am also very smart in math. I am at the 99th percentile. How are you?" She probably knows my aptitude in math. "I am leaving, I am learning Japanese. Konnichiwa, grenakitsu, watashi wa, elisabithyou desu. Hi, how are you? My name is Elizabeth. I hope you can handle being mazer, being mazer mayor easily, much easier than I can handle reading Japanese. I love my cousin, and my nana, and my papa. My little brother is cute. I have a dog named Maggie and a puppy named Rico. Rico is cute, but he always makes a mess. My two cats are named Derby and Pepper. I like to play video games with my cousin. Bye. Signed, Elizabeth."
Aww.
Elizabeth, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts with us. It's always great and refreshing for us to hear from the children in our town. Council, if there's no further comments, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? Very good, thank you for watching at home, thank you for participating on Facebook, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here at our council meeting tonight. We're adjourned.
Aye.
I'm going to hurry to get you to the airport. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now officially adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Franklin.